All to order, the meeting of the Cohasset Board of Selectmen, it is Tuesday, June twenty sixth, seven P M. At, in Town Hall. Christine, our town manager, is not here this evening, so in acting as, in the role of town manager, is Chief Bob Sylvia. I'd like to invite everybody to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on the agenda is public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on an item that is not on our agenda, you may do so now by coming up. Okay, if that's nice. So we will go right to Holly Hill Farm, the one day license. Let me just get to that. Yeah, yeah, sorry, I'm just, yeah, my computer didn't boot up properly. So Holly Hill Farm is applying for a one day liquor license for a Feed the Hungry Gala private dinner on Friday, September fourteenth. The hours are six to ten P M. The location is Holly Hill Farm, two thirty six Jerusalem Road. Is there anybody here from Holly Hill? Actually, the applicant is the Interfaith Social Services, who's having a private dinner for twenty, who likes to drink alcohol. Presumably, they would have to apply for alcohol, a one day liquor license, if they were charging money for the event, which is, I gather, what it is. So, does anybody here have any questions?
No.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion for a one day liquor license?
Uh, make a motion to approve the application for a special one day liquor license, uh, for the police, for the contractor, or Holly Hill Farms, Feed the Hungry Gala, Friday, September fourteenth, two thousand, eighteen, six to ten P M.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty. Rebe, you're up. You don't mind just reintroducing yourself to us and your address for the record, please?
Yeah, good evening. My name is John Dolan, and my address is forty eight Beach Palm Lane in Situate.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So, just give us sort of a summary, and then I'm sure we'll have some questions just about the room and
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
the volume of people, et cetera.
Yep. Yeah, so a quick recap from last year. Everything went really well. Runners had a great time. We didn't have any incidents, no medical issues, no accidents or anything, no complaints that I heard of from the, from the community. This'll be our fifth year with the event, so we're back at it, and we were able to get back to the charities as we had planned, spread it around to the American Liver Foundation, Cohasset Education Foundation, and the Wellspring Multi-Center over, uh, Multi-Service Center over in Hull, yep. So, the first three years of the race, we had gone over Cunningham Bridge. Last year, we went around it because of the construction. This year, we're gonna go with the same plan to go around it. I understand the construction looks like it's gonna wrap up around October, so the, the race, uh, the date for the race this year is September twenty ninth, so we're just gonna assume the bridge will be out of commission, and, and we'll go with last year's course.
Can you review the course with us, just especially for people listening at home?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, it's a, uh, it's a half marathon. It's, uh, out and back. It's an out and back course, so you start and finish in the same spot. It starts at Nantasket Beach in Hull, and so it comes along Nantasket Ave, West Corner, turns left onto Jerusalem. That's where we enter Cohasset. We will take a right where Jerusalem takes the hard right, a, as opposed to following straight for Atlantic. We'll take Jerusalem out to Main Street, North Main Street, left there, um, left on Highland, I think, over to Beach Street, and then we'll follow that around to Atlantic, around the Cove.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the turnaround point is at the Cohasset Sailing Club, so we'll go just over the bridge, past the Lobster Pound, and then there's a nice actual little turnaround right there at the Sailing Club. So that's the furthest point of the race, and then the runners will come back.
So this is different in previous years, not last year. You, you went all the way into Situate? Is that right?
Yeah, exactly. So, uh, previous years, at that turn where Jerusalem takes the hard right, we stayed straight to go onto Atlantic, went out that way, um, and that's shorter, so by the time you get to the Cove, we would extend into Situate, turn around in the neighborhood into Situate, um, out Border Street, and then go back.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Does the board have any questions?
How many miles is it?
It's thirteen.
Half marathon.
Half, thirteen point one. Still spots available.
So, since we have the fire chief here, who I know is part of the kind of, you know, advanced preparation, and then ultimately debriefing on events, do you have anything to weigh in with?
Um, no, uh, the police have their traffic plan all in place. They have, uh, they've requested additional details. That's all, that's all been agreed to. Uh, we do spin up a second ambulance that is dedicated just to the event, so that it's minimal impact on us. Um, John has done a pretty decent job with the, with the runners. The first year, they thought they were all running the Boston Marathon, so they were cutting the apexes of every single corner on Jerusalem Road, and
I remember that.
having them running into oncoming traffic wasn't a good thing. So, the education piece has happened over the years, and they, they stay in their own lane. You know, it, it, it does impact the traffic, but we don't close down any roads completely. The road's alive, so, so it's, you know, it's worked out pretty well. And it's congested at the beginning
Yeah.
until, until the fast people stretch this thing out, and the slow people tail, and then it kind of becomes not a big deal, a big deal. But when they first make the corner on the Jerusalem Road, it's pretty much a long scene.
Yep.
Yeah.
But it works out pretty well.
And it's capped at four hundred?
It is, yep. And that, I will say, that's a change from the last couple of years. We had it at three hundred the last couple of years, and there's a, frankly, there's a lot of demand for this race. I have to turn people away. There's a waiting list every year, and so we talked about that in the, in the logistics planning session that we had, and my intention is not to kind of keep creeping this up every year and turn it into a, you know, a three thousand person race where we're closing the roads at some point, but I thought this might be a good combination of giving a few more people a chance to run the race, and then also we can give back a little bit more too, with that revenue. So, um, we thought that would be manageable. We'll see how it goes this year, and then if we have to pull back again next year, we can do that.
Can you just describe how you, the lanes that, that you create, or whether you create it?
It's just more a case of every, they're, they all understand that they need to keep to the right.
No matter which way they're going.
So, that's really, wherever they're going. So, it's, you know, it's inbound toward the harbor, they're in the right lane. Outbound, back toward Hull, they go right lane going the other way. So, um, that's why we're able to keep the roads open, because there's no crossing over roads for all intents and purposes, even when they're, even when you have a group of people, a car can slow down and then go around them as, as, you know, as it's allowed. So, it's worked out pretty well. Um, the other thing I would mention is, John has a hard stop on this event. So, it's three hours, and anybody that's still on course at three, at the three hour mark gets picked up. It does not stretch out past that. So, it worked, from that standpoint, going early enough in the morning and having that hard stop gets them off the roads before the majority of the traffic shows up.
Hop on board the loser cruiser.
It's terrible.
You don't want to be on that bus, yeah.
Okay.
Steve.
Yeah, I know. Thanks for that, chief. And I will say, we do a couple other things as well. So, we have, we, I, I try and overdetail this course, so we actually have a lead police car that's going in front of the first runner, and so they're kind of setting the, setting the path for the, uh, the rest of the runners. And then, we have somebody who's on a bike, who's riding kind of up and down throughout, among the runners, throughout the race, and making sure they're staying on the right. We overcommunicate that they're gonna get disqualified if they don't just stay to the right the whole time, so we're really trying to, I know how, you know, twisty and turny Jerusalem is especially, so we're trying to, uh, make sure people are safe.
Yeah, people, people get nervous when they're driving, and there's any kind of athletic activity, even on a regular day, you know, with people walking, so I appreciate all of that.
Oh, yeah. Right.
And the actual race, the, the permit that we will be voting on is from five A M. to noon, just because of putting out cones and whatever you need to do, but the race starts at seven thirty.
Starts at seven thirty, three hour limit. Um, so the runner's time in, in Cohasset is, you know, probably seven forty-five to nine thirty, something like that.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Um, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the three beach half marathon for September twenty ninth, um, from five A M. to noon?
So, move, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks.
Good luck. Thanks very much.
And I've never had a call about it, so.
Oh, good. Well, please let me know if you do, because it stands up for it.
You're doing something for us. Thank you. Okay, um, so we had originally scheduled for seven ten, a, um, a public hearing for a proposed change of manager for A and S Restaurants LLC DBA Atlantica. Um, we received notification from, uh, and this is, to be clear, something that, um, the town has been working very closely with the owners and management, and, um, also with many of the community members who have concerns on the Atlantica property. Um, so, we, we've, we received a letter the other day from Gord, Gord, Gerd, Gortlehide, and, um, withdrawing, um, from consideration, the proposed manager that we were supposed to have the hearing on tonight, and, um, he will provide a properly vetted hospitality professional for the position ASAP, and at the latest by the end of next week, which would be this Friday, um, June twenty ninth. Am I right with that date? Yes. So, um, what I would like to ask the board to do is, A, know that that's coming on Friday, um, and then, at, at this point, I'd like to schedule a hearing to, for the beginning of our meeting on July tenth, to hear the application for the proposed licensed manager for Atlantica. Um, we don't know who it's gonna be, but we are gonna know soon enough, and we are gonna, without, with as much haste as possible, have the hearing on July tenth. I don't know a whole lot more than that, but, um, you know, I'm happy to entertain a discussion.
How long has the, the, uh, facility been without a manager now?
Yeah, I don't know the actual answer to that. I think since late April.
So, I, I just wanna say, there are quite a few people working hard to solve this problem right now. You don't see activity, but it's going on. So, I think we just gotta be patient for another week.
I, 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 I respect your, your knowledge of the situation, Jack. I'm just, I caution the board one more time, that, um, this particular operator has floated so many balloons that have burst before they reach ten feet above the ground
Right.
that I, you know, I honestly, in order to make some metaphors, I think his name might better be Lucy, holding football. And so I just, I'm, I'd be cautious. If we don't see something in a week, I think the board has to take, uh, take that into consideration.
I could not agree more.
Has, um, have they been put on, they've been without a manager now for two months. So, what are the rules on that? Aren't they supposed to report it to us to another manager and give us one, isn't it within thirty days or something?
So. They're, they're supposed to give you a, um, a, s, s, if, if a manager leaves suddenly, uh, they're supposed to notify the board immediately, and they're supposed to have like a, an, sort of a, an acting manager. Licensed establishments sometimes lose their managers for one reason or another, and there certainly has been a history over the last several years of, of rapid change of managers here. But the sta, and, and the establishment is supposed to have a manager of record, but, uh, they're not expected to close down just because a manager walked out or because a manager was, was terminated. The owner of, the holder of the license is expected to take immediate steps to have a responsible individual carrying out the functions of the manager, and then they're supposed to properly be applying for a, a new manager to be approved by the board and the A B C C.
So, let's go back there for just a second, because you just hit upon a key word. Who's the holder of the license?
Now.
Their, whoever their temporary man.
A, A and S Restaurants LLC, uh, DBA Atlantica.
And who's the human being? The holder of the license, who is a natural person?
It was the manager of record who has left. Um, they, corporations or LAs, LLCs, uh, are supposed to have a individual,
Right.
which we know designated as the manager.
Right.
And that's subject to the approval of the board. They were proposing to have the applicant of this most current application
That now withdrawn, okay.
who's now been withdrawn, now was withdrawn, it, because I understand that she has been acting as, from the business's point of view, as the responsible person overseeing the operation under the license.
Okay. So, in, in the absence of a current applicant, should the board assume that that, that person continues on the same role?
Unless the, unless the operation, you know, changes, uh, who the person is that's, that's, that's in charge, they're supposed to notify the board, and, uh,
So, have they done that?
I'm not, I'm not sure that they've notified the board originally when, a couple of months ago, when the manager left, uh,
Manager notified.
and this person was designated as the acting manager. I don't know Tracy.
So, the person who was the acting manager, we weren't even notified of that?
I.
We were, we were notified by the departing manager of his departure. Um, and it took, uh, some wrangling to get the I'm sorry, I, I just, I, I'm drawing a blank, um, the, um, members of the LLC to step forward and notify us of that instance, right?
We shouldn't have to do that, though, right?
No, no. That's not, that's not the way, that's not the way, uh, the game's normally played.
No.
Um, and this was the, this was the, you know, about a month late, this was the application to come forward, but apparently there's reason for that application not going further, and so my question is exactly surrounding that. If the application's not coming, coming to us because of some level of insufficiency, then are we comfortable with that very same person administering the license for the next week? And I.
Well, so what happened was, is there was a person proposed.
I mean, I don't know how much we can get into this.
Yeah.
I wouldn't.
I wouldn't.
I wouldn't.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think
My understanding is.
I think the point's really well taken by everybody, and I know everybody's really concerned. Can we just wait a week and, and have this discussion a week from now? Is that okay? I mean, because I think a lot of this will get resolved.
So. So, we will know on Friday, because, um, you know, we have in writing that on Friday, we are gonna have a name of who's, who is managing operations over there. Presumably, it would be the same person that they're putting forward as a permanent manager. We'll find that out Friday, and if that doesn't happen, um, I will be in touch about scheduling an emergency hearing.
Well, let's, let's have it during our regular meeting, because we've had enough of emergency hearings with these, this.
Yeah, but, well, I, but I do think we need to
At the, on next meeting.
we need to understand that, that there's, that's July tenth. Right, so if we feel like there's some, let's put it this way, if we feel like there's some action that needs to be immediately taken, you know, like nobody's over there or something, then I would think that would require us to come up with a different, um,
Does anybody know if it's got regular, is Atlantica holding regular hours right now? I don't even know.
Schedule. Don't know that.
I, I know they're running events, and I don't know if they're, I have no idea if they're keeping regular hours.
Yep, we're gonna find all that out. Yeah.
Um, that's a worthwhile question to forward to the agent.
Well, we, the, at one of our last meetings, we had asked that, you know,
To keep track.
we unders, we have a better understanding, and that hasn't been presented to us.
Well, then I guess that's my point.
What their hours are.
That last meeting was before the board reorganization, which would bring us back to May. And we're almost, we're in the, you know, almost into July.
Right.
So, I don't really think it's very difficult to ask a business owner to say, could you please just give po, give us your posted hours?
Posted hours, no, that's.
And then I have to wait six weeks or more for it.
Yep.
That's.
Unless my memory's, uh, slipping here, we, we, we have asked for the, you know, they had promised to give those
Many times.
many times. So, what do we, we're not asking, so we're now asking this again.
Come on, Joe, I'm taking the football.
Wasn't there a movie about Groundhogs or something?
Groundhog.
Groundhog Day, it's the same thing over and over and over again.
I just wanna make sure that I'm not having a, some kind of an experience here.
No.
You are not. We're, we're with you.
It's not deja vu, it's real, and, um, and that's, and, and that's exactly the point. So, yeah, that's fine. If we, if we wait till Friday, and something magically materializes, well, that's, that's, uh, certainly moving in the right direction. If not, this is, I, this is getting tiresome.
Well, trust me.
Well, I'm, I, I, I
I know.
I have to, because you're in that seat, but that's the point.
Yeah. No, no, no.
And it's time to start enforcing regulations.
So, you have my, um, I, I will make sure we have a properly vetted hospitality professional's name on record here, and, um, that we have regular hours, and that we are made aware of those, um, on Friday.
Can we, um, can we also give, yeah, thank you, never mind.
Okay. All right.
I, I was gonna suggest if the board wanted to keep this moving, because I have been watching over the years, the, uh, the process.
The Groundhog Day?
The Groundhog Day, uh, you know, the, the board could send a letter to them, uh, go out tomorrow, I imagine, uh, indicating that they're acknowledging receipt. Uh, you should technically vote to allow the withdrawal of the application uh, at their request of the prior change of manager application. Remind them that in this letter, they've indicated that there will be a, a new application, uh, at the end of the week with a proper person, and remind them also of the responsibilities under the board's local rules and regulations to promptly notify the board of any change in managers, and to promptly apply for a new manager. If you wanted to go an extra step, you know, you s, you could tell them in that letter that you've scheduled a hearing on the change of manager for July tenth. They need to get all their paperwork inti, uh, filed promptly enough so that the police department can do the appropriate background check, and if you wanna go an extra step, you could also tell them, uh, if you vote to schedule a show cause hearing on whether their license should be suspended or revoked for lack of a manager, if they don't meet these standards, and you could uh, at least initially schedule that for July tenth. If they may send a message.
Okay, so, um, first, to, could I have a motion to accept the withdrawal of the proposed, um, liquor manager for Atlantica, which we received, um, which was the topic of the hearing tonight?
Make a motion, we accept the withdrawal of the ma, proposed manager for the, uh,
Atlantica. Atlantica.
Atlantica.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then, Jim, do you want us to take a vote for you to, and would you be able to do this, craft this letter for tomorrow?
I, I, working with Tracy and, uh, and Jen.
And whoever, is that your disposal?
In the actual town, the other.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd be able to do it, but pretty, let us send over tomorrow.
I don't know.
Right, and basically, that letter is going to, you know, remind them of their promise to have, um, you know, a suitable, properly vetted hospitality professional's name, um, um, an application for the, the, um, for the manager of the liquor license. This is for Atlantica. Uh, remind them of their responsibilities under our Cohasset rules and regulations for liquor, um, on notification and hours, um, and then let them know that, uh, we are scheduling a hearing for July tenth for the change of manager. And any other.
And we also, you know, Jim also suggested that he's, if they're not ready to go on the tenth, we're gonna talk about.
Why? Have a show cause hearing.
Yeah, exactly.
You'd have to give them proper notice, uh, which you, you would have time to give them notice of, uh, a hearing on the tenth.
Yep. Yep.
Uh, of, A, the change of manager application, and in the absence of, uh, change of, of manager to a satisfactory manager, that the board will hold a hearing, uh, on whether to take some action against their license.
Okay. All right, is, is there a motion to, um, ask Jim, with the help of our staff, to get that letter crafted in and out tomorrow?
So.
Is there a second? Okay.
And, and whose signature will that go out under? The, the chair, or the town manager, or?
Um, whoever is available and authorizes.
It probably.
It's actually the, the only, the only authority that can do it is the board, or?
The boss.
Is it, so the chair will say, you know, you're licensed.
Yeah. Board could authorize, you know, the act, the acting town manager.
Right.
Well, Diane.
Or, or if Diane is around, you know, or you could authorize, once you see the letter electronically, you could authorize, you know, the staff to sign.
Yeah, I can do it. Yep. Right. Sign forms, okay.
So, yeah, the chair could take care of that now.
That's what we're doing. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Great, thank you. Okay. Next is the update on the town manager review process. Um, so, Lisa, are you gonna just listen in, or do you wanna participate at all, or?
Uh, do you have any question? I mean, Chris communicated with me, uh, about this. I, I did send him a, a memo explaining some of the legal issues. Uh, some of those issues have been necessitated by a, a April court decision, um, that, where, where the court it, uh, found wrong with a board of selectmen in Wayland, uh, for distributing information to all the members before the, before the meeting on the evaluation, which would seem to make sense to do, but, under the open meeting law, the way it's been interpreted, that constitutes a deliberation, and you can't deliberate outside of a meeting. Um, it really, it's like.
Chasing our tails.
Yeah, I mean, they, they really need to, you know, the court interpreted the law the way it's written, and the, it's the legislature that needs to to try to make some workable system here.
So, so basically, um, the way we've done it in the past is, we each fill out an individual evaluation, um, and we meet with the town manager one on one, um, to deliver that information, and those get, um, basically compiled, or the aggregate of it becomes one document that is presented at a public meeting. So, in the past, there's usually been two selectmen that have worked with the Human Resources Director on that compilation, and then ultimately, but, but the law now, basically, or the court decision says, my reading everybody else's constitutes a deliberation.
Outside of a meeting.
So, the recommend, the recommendation, and what a lot of towns are doing as a practical, um, matter, is having somebody else, like an H R professional, do that aggregate scoring, and then presenting us with the public document at the public meeting, um, where we read through it. Um, we've talked, at the last meeting, one of the concerns was, frankly, um, and this is Lisa Yorinora, who's our, which our person.
Yeah, a little wine for me.
Um, I'll, let me just wrap this up. But one of our concerns was the likely aggregator would be somebody that works for Chris, and that just seems a little awkward, uh, at a minimum. So, we just wondered, we had asked Chris to reach out and see how anybody else did it, but it really is kind of a new thing. So, that's where we're at.
I do have one piece of information, just a, a follow-up. So,
Yes. Thank you.
um, there was another town recently that was going through this. They had their H R director, um, compile everything, and it ended up causing some problems, um, because there was one of the selectmen that didn't like the way that she compiled it. She felt like he had something very important, and she didn't include that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, um, so it did, it did end up causing, um, some conflict.
Some issues.
Um, so, it was great that, you know, there was somebody kind of putting everything together, um, but it wasn't ideal. You know, she kind of got in a little bit of trouble.
Right, and she felt, and that was a bad position to put her in, and so, I don't have a recommendation. I don't know, I, you know, I think it's.
So, I did, I did have one thought, and I'll, you can play with it, um, but one idea is that you could have one person compile it, and that can be a staff member, but that you have a non-staff member kind of check it, uh, do like a, a verification. And that way, you're not paying someone all the time, you know, to kind of put everything together, um, and, but you would still have kind of a third party making sure that it was, everything was properly represented. So, that's just an idea.
Right. It does seem silly. So, usually, what we all do is, most of it is, is, is numerical, or scoring, and then there's sometimes comments, you know, on various aspects. Um, and then we each summarize all of our comments in a, you know, more of a prose kind of review. These are the strengths, these are the weaknesses, which we present publicly. So, I don't know whether it's worth just using the document that we, we all were sent, Lisa prepared, we were sent this weekend, using that and just doing the metrics, and then separately, because that's a lot harder to fudge, you know? Somebody might say, oh, well, Kevin said something under this particular area, and Steve kind of said the same thing, I like Kevin's wording better, or that's where this judgment call kind of has to, will come in and can put somebody in an awkward. That's where this judgment call kinda has to, will come in and can put somebody in an awkward position. I don't know, any, any input?
So, you're suggesting that we just do the quantitative ranking, compile that, and present that at a public meeting, is that?
Yep.
And then we would comment openly at the public meeting on the, on the quantitative rating?
And then. Which we do anyway.
Yeah, we do.
Yep.
Would someone be aggregating your, your comments, a staff person?
Well.
Because if, if you, if you all come to the meeting with all your, uh...
Right, it is ridiculous, but we gotta come up with a solution.
But you could theoretically aggregate them after the, the meeting. You could bring them up the first time at the meeting, but then once it's become public, once it's all been stated, you have.
Well, you could always do the aggregation, but always have the backup material attached to that aggrega- uh, aggregation, so anybody could see it, if they wanted to, maybe that would do it.
Well, maybe prevent you from releasing this information, although there are privacy considerations.
That's right, and that's why we do the, the individual is usually.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That things get.
Could we, could we, is it, sometimes you, you, is it maybe not feasible with one of our auditors that, you know, put an audit to be able to?
Do, do you think that if, if the individual board members did their evaluations and then gave it to you
They're not gonna do that.
or gave it to someone else to aggregate? I mean, sure, there was this problem in another community, but I don't, I don't know how likely that's to happen.
I think Lisa's proposal, Bear is thinking through. Ultimately, this is our job, right? This is our job, this is, this is the one person we supervise and we evaluate, and we were elected among many other things to execute on this. So Lisa's proposal is that we go through and do our own evaluations.
Bring them to the meeting.
Bring them to the meeting, discuss them publicly at the meeting, after which, we can go through the process of, uh, we could then go through the process of aggregation, because at that point, the, the broad discussion has taken place publicly, and we are not any further deliberating, right? We're simply, we're simply assembling the information at that point. This is an amazing, um, feat of jujitsu in order to comply with one of the most arcane and bizarre executions of, of what otherwise was a pretty damn good idea, a public meeting, or open public meetings.
Yep.
Having said that, if we were to essentially move to work our individual evaluations initially, then we are free to put together a joint evaluation post facto.
Right.
If I'm wrong about that, and, and, or Lisa's idea about that is somehow incorrect, and we think we are then still aggregating open meeting law, please say so. But it sounds to me like the, the task of simply assembling the collective review, which has been aired publicly at that point, is no longer open for, you know, o- open for, um, uh, internal debate.
So, if, but if you, the only caveat you have to be aware of is, if you bring your individual evaluations to a selectmen's meeting, those are documents that are being used by the board at the meeting, and under the public records law, uh, under the, straight, under the open meeting law, those documents become public records.
Right.
If you have a document that's been prepared not by board members, but by a third person, and that is brought to the meeting, it's, that document is a public document. But, you know, some, some boards have concerns about their, because of the personnel requirements and personnel laws,
Yes.
there's certain privacy issues.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, you, you wanna be careful not to transcend those.
So, I just wanna ask a question about the process. The way we did it last year was, we filled out these application, we filled out the review forms, we sat down with Chris and went through them individually.
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 And then those review forms went in a file, and then I believe Diane and Paul sat down and reviewed it all. What if, what if we just did what we did last year, which is fill out those forms, have our meeting with Chris, and then put those in the file, and then just have an open public meeting on the quantitative piece of it with our comments, and leave it at that? Could we do that, and not do an aggregated write-up? Is there any reason by law we have to have an aggregated write-up?
You're not required to have an aggregated, uh, write-up, uh, and if two of the members are, are reviewing it. This is all somewhat fairly new, and, and the AG's office has given some guidance, but, uh, it's still not, not clear. You've just gotta be careful that two members reviewing this be considered deliberation.
No, that won't happen.
Yeah.
He's saying we don't do, that's what happened last year.
We don't do, we skip that step, and we just do the quantitative summary, and don't bother aggregating the written comment.
What are you gonna bring to the meeting?
Not, uh, we.
Just a summary, our own personal summation, or whatever, right.
Nothing. We could, we don't even have to do that, what if we just, we get the aggregated quantitative ranking, and then we speak from memory on?
So each person would report at the meeting what their aggregated.
What their position was on that, on that ranking. You know, let's say, uh, we ranked Chris's ability to mow the front lawn, and Kevin said, he's terrible, you know, he always forgets to put gas in the lawnmower. And, and Steve says, he does a perfect job, and I'm seeing that with a pair of scissors clipped in the grass, right?
Cause there's no gas in the lawnmower.
Right, so, you know, and he got a three.
But he got the job done, so I'm happy.
Out of five, he got a three, I mean, you know, we're, we're accomplishing the same thing, we're saying, he aggregated to a three, and here was Kevin's position, here was Steve's position, and we can move on. And it's just the record is the visual record of us commenting on it.
If, for the benefit of, of the public watching this, it's not like the board's trying, or Chris is trying to, to hide things.
Right.
Uh, state law has determined that evaluative materials and criteria are not records subject to mandatory disclosure, because of personnel requirements, because of privacy issues. So, just so I don't want people to think that you're.
Thank you.
Uh, you're trying to hide things, it's, it's not a question of that, it's a question of respecting that this is what the law is.
But i- if in the future, we wanted to have a deliberation, say, about the manager, we could then, we'd go into executive session, and then we could take those envelopes out and discuss them in the executive session.
It depends on what reason you're going into executive session, I mean, if, uh, and I'm just speaking in the abstract, nothing to do, you know, with your current manager, with, with Chris, but if there were complaints, uh, against an individual, you can go into executive session to talk about that, uh, whatever.
The thing is, is, is those records that are essentially sealed ever openable?
Uh, they, they, they would be open.
In, in an ex- in an executive session.
As, as long as they are evaluative material, uh, and as long as they're not talked about in an open meeting, which would, as long as they're evaluative material, it, it, it's very confusing.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
But, but having, 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 having sat in one of these chairs during a situation where there was concern about a town manager, and we didn't have anything in the personnel file, because we were prevented sort of from doing that, and we had nothing to discuss at an executive session, but if there were a problem to your, to your point, and this is not the case, this is just a what-ifs, if we had each sat down and had, you know, a private evaluation, and those are tucked away in the thing, and then there's a, there's a complaint or an issue where we go into exception number one, which is to discuss the character of, and that presumably that employee would be made aware of that, then we would have that, to Kevin's point, as backup material.
And we could use it then in an executive, but it can also be used to be helpful to the man, manager, you know.
Absolutely.
Chris, start the thing there.
I'm just saying, it could be used, I just wanna, so, so, yeah, so the information doesn't get locked up, sealed, and it's never usable, it's usable by us, but in an appropriate executive session, am I correct on that?
Um.
Or is that still confusing?
It's still, uh, un- unclear, but I was gonna suggest, is there a time period that you have to do this by?
Really?
I mean, I've, I've seen the contract, and, um.
I think we should have it done by the end of July, by the contract, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know, I think the contract actually is specific about a date, but if not, it is specific about an annual, and we did one last year this month.
Supposed to be an annual review, I'm not sure that it says.
Right.
The board shall annually review and evaluate the manager, uh, shall be based on goals and objectives, uh, shall provide the manager with a summary written of the findings of the board, uh... It shall be part of the manager's personnel file, subject to the op- open meeting law. What I was gonna suggest, the reason I asked if there's a, a time period, I don't see any specific time period, I mean, is if you have several, you've had, you've raised several questions, and the process is a little bit murky, uh, because of this fairly recent case.
Mm-hmm.
So, what I was gonna suggest was, you could, should be, shoot for the end of July, but in the meantime, over the next couple of weeks, get to me whate- whatever questions you have, and so that we can put together a comprehensive memo addressing the, the issues, cause the last thing we wanna have is something that turns out be inconsistent with the way the AG's office, for example, is interpreting it.
So.
Does the Attorney General have any recommendations on how to execute this?
Well, I've been told anecdotally that the, based on this case, that the AG's office has, uh...
Cause I, I read that, and they said basically that what they did was not proper, but is there a means to modify what they did?
Well, the board, what was not proper in that case was sharing of the evaluations amongst the board members outside of a meeting.
Right.
Uh, because that was considered to be deliberation.
So, that's something like what Jack would say, said you could do, each individual,
Yes.
You give, put in the employee file, you come to the meeting, you say, these are the items that I think are, are according to the, we have on our, our flow chart.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, do it there, and that would work.
That, that, that arguably would, would seem to make sense. Um, the documents in the file would be evaluative material, and as long as they're not used at a, at a, um, public meeting of the board, uh, they would fall under the protection of being evaluative material in the file and, and not of public record.
So, it's almost like there's two, two separate documents. One is the, the one-to-one with Chris that becomes part of the personnel file, which is kind of what we were doing, but we were using that same document to then aggregate all the comments publicly.
And now we're saying, let's not.
We're just saying, no, let's not.
And so in open meeting, we could give our review, evaluation.
You kind of.
So.
Leaving our memory of what we spoke to him about, but not necessarily reveal what's in the personnel file.
So, could I suggest, just, just to move this to, to a conclusion, this particular conversation, um, that, um, I'll, I'm gonna type up what I think your framework is, cause I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay, we've discussed it. I'm gonna send it to Jim, and then anybody that has any comments, send it to Jim, and CC, Lisa, and then we'll try to come up with the structure for moving forward with this.
Can you send us what you send to Jim, or is that?
Yeah.
Is that an open meeting?
Yeah.
The what?
Just the framework?
Just so we could do this in an orderly way.
Cause we just talked about it.
You, you could do the, you could do the, I think you could send that, but you can't go exchanging outside of a, outside of a meeting.
No, I mean, if we had a copy of that, then we could get, we could look at that and say, I have a comment for you on odd five, that might make it a little.
And you comment to me with other questions.
Yes, right, right.
You can't exchange it amongst yourselves, except at a public meeting.
No, 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 I'm.
I'll do that, just, just to move the ball along, I'll send it to everybody, and if you have any comments on it, send them.
Yeah.
And what? You know, with a note atop saying, don't distribute, you know, the confidentiality.
Could you send it to Jim, he gets it to us.
Yeah, yeah, whatever, okay, that makes sense.
Where we got it.
Yeah, yeah.
And say, give me a clean up. So, can I also suggest that, once we're done with all this, that we get a one-page outline, you know, that says, this is how the review process is gonna go, seven, eight bullet points, that's only fair, that's only fair to the town manager, it's clear for us, and it's clear to the community, too. So, there should be that process laid out one, once you, once you're done on this, okay?
So, and, and just one more thing on this, which is, um, in, in terms of timing, I do wanna make sure we get this on an agenda by the end of July, if at all possible, because what ends up happening is, you know, it's not like we stop, and it's the end of the, we have all this time for reflection on the previous fiscal year. Like, all of a sudden, we're setting goals and budget messages for the development of the budget, like, we're, we're off and running in mid-aug- August. So, I wanna make sure we wrap this up while we still have, we're in a position where we can properly review Chris on his goals for that year, and then go forward setting our own goals and his for next year.
So, can I suggest we just keep going on the individual app, you know, the individual, we should just finish them, right?
Yep. Yeah, I don't thi- I, I don't think there's any reason why we can't, with the document that was already sent out, that we can't just do that, and then the actual mechanics of the distribution.
What do you want, what do you want a draft of those done? When would we potentially be scheduling meetings with Chris to review?
As soon as you, as soon as you want to.
Beginning of August, or even sooner?
Or even earlier.
Okay.
Right?
I was under the impression that you were going to be doing your one-on-ones with, with Chris over several weeks,
For July tenth, yeah.
and by the end of July, you would have some type of a meeting, the, the public meeting where you were.
Okay.
We literally have it on the, etched on, like, of a draft agendas for the, for July tenth, which I think doesn't make sense, but
Oh, right, no.
We'll, we can push it to the twenty-fourth. So, so to the board, the document that you have, let's just work with that as a private, you know, one-on-one personnel evaluation tool that you will discuss with Chris, and then await further instruction?
And don't distribute it or anything.
Don't distribute, don't do anything, keep it quiet.
Just send it in.
And, and I have another question, I, I, on my calendar, I had a meeting on the seventeenth, that's not true, right?
No, we canceled that last week, yeah, cause a couple of us are uptown.
Okay. Yep.
Okay, Lisa, any, anything to add, does that kind of make sense, sort of, maybe? Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
And this one that we have was all completed, it's filled in, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Yep, yeah, thank you for that, Lisa.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next up.
So, so will you want me here on the twenty-fourth, or I think we'll have, we can communicate ahead of time, you should all mark it down,
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
if you don't want me here, that's more than fine.
Right, right, yeah, mark it down as that's the most likely, although by then, we may have everything figured out so beautifully, and you will have advised so nicely that we don't need you, but.
Mm-hmm, that's a good, that's a good goal.
Put it on hold.
Okay.
Okay, uh, next up is the RNAB pilot Massport letter from Representative Moschino. So, I'm gonna, um...
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
So, Representative Moschino had reached out to, um, a bunch of the communities, um, and with a draft letter that she was hoping the communities would sign off on, to, um, Thomas Glenn, who's the CEO of Massport, um, regarding, well, I'm not gonna go into what it's regarding, cause I'm hoping, uh, Mr. Dormitzer will help us out a little bit. S- s- um, I, we forwarded the letter along to, and discussed last week a little bit, having Ralph's input, because he's our representative, um, um, to the Mass, to Massport, and I wanted to get his input on what this letter was asking. In the meantime, Ralph made some, what I think are nice clarification edits to the letter, and then we received, um, information from Rep. Moschino's office today that all the town managers and mayors were signing off on the original letter that she sent, and wondered whether we could send over, um, Chris's signature stamp. So, that's kind of a separate thing, because I think you massaged the letter nicely enough that I want us to hear about the, what, what you updated on the letter, and give us a little, um,
Sure.
um, background on what this is all about, so if you don't mind coming up? Doing the, doing the introductions. Oh, I'm sorry, I do, I'm sorry, I didn't. So, we got one in our packet, but this is a, a recent.
I've updated it, yeah.
This will.
Um, edit from Ralph.
So, what do you really need to know from me, um, uh, Diane, what, what's, what do you, do you know the context of this?
No, I, I hope you could give us the context more for everybody at home, as well as the board.
Okay. Okay. Um, about a year ago, Massport and the FAA engaged with Dr. John Hansman of MIT to do a study of how the noise environment could be improved in the greater Boston area. That's the basis of all of this. Hansman has had two or three major meetings with the communities in which he tried to show what possible things could be done that would improve the noise environment. There were two what are called blocks. The first block was things that had no negative impacts on any population. And block two, and I'll show you the di- diagram I've done, in block two, there were potential negative implications of moving traffic, air, airplane traffic from one community to another. The reason for this letter was that, in fact, one of the major recommendations from Dr. Hansman is shown up here on this board. And there are two slides, this is one, all I did with this one, because I wanted you to really see what, what, what this change would do, is this is arrivals on runway four, um, if you look at the upper left, okay?
Right, yeah.
Okay, normally, and there's another slide, which we can show you, what, what, why don't you, why don't you show the other slide? I'll come back to this one, I'll show you first, do the other one first. Oh, um, okay, this is awfully hard, can you expand that a little bit on the right? If you can bring it up even stri- can you, can you expand it, Tracy? Okay, don't bother, but the, the point is, most of the arrivals on.
It's right at the bar.
Yeah, can you, that's the place, yeah, that's it, I'd, I'd, keep going. Yep, can you, that's the place, yeah, that's it, I'd, I'd, keep going until you really can see it, okay, now, now, now go up a little bit.
Just put the cursor on the picture and pull, now you can, you can just drag it.
Yeah.
Drag. Turn it down.
Drag, drag it up, yeah.
There we go.
Okay, all right. The, the main route into runway four, as you can see, is straight in, it is over Milton. Milton gets about thirty-six percent of the flights every year, so it's a high percentage of the flights. So you do understand what a major, original, and what is now the current operating procedure is for flights to arrive on runway four in that straight-in path, from this left diagonal straight-in. What Hansman has proposed is in fact, what is euphemistically called the Carnarsie approach, which is the, which is a, which is a corkscrew approach
That would accomplish.
to, to go to the JFK Airport, that was invented several years ago, called the Carnarsie approach. And this is a corkscrew approach into that same runway four. As you can see, it kinda comes in over what looks like nice harbor islands and kinda swings in over the harbor. So that you avoid the communities which would have been, for example, Milton, Quincy and Dorchester. And this one just kinda hits, maybe it hits Hull in a bit of um, Quincy, okay.
So this is the recommended?
That's the, that's the new recommended one.
The Carnarsie?
Carnarsie.
Okay, go back to, now you understand what the thing is, okay, now just go back to the other one. This is the, this is, I actually plotted the waypoints on Google Earth for your benefit. This is far more damaging than people really understood, and that's the reason for the letter rejecting proposing doing this. If you look at the actual waypoints, which are indicated by those um, um, yellow markers, okay. These are actual detailed waypoints that are actually in Hansman's proposal. You'll see that Hull gets really creamed by this, okay, it's on the upper right, there's the peninsula of Hull, you can see the words. Um, Wallaston Beach gets, gets slammed, as does um, Marina Bay, and then finally, it, it, it goes in and hits runway four.
How often is runway four utilized in a year?
Run, runway four is used thirty-six percent, runway three-three, which flies over us, is used about sixteen percent. But the other little piece of information that you ought to know is every time runway four arrivals is used, runway nine is used for departures. And runway nine departures come right back over Cohasset. So already, we get the nines, we get thirty-six percent there, okay? Milton is complaining they shouldn't get thirty-six percent. However, we also get three-three arrivals, which is another twenty-six percent, okay, a year, and we get the two-two departures, which is another twenty-two percent. We get eighty percent of all the flights come over either Cohasset, Hull or Citroen, I mean, it's an amazing number, okay.
You, you got, y'all understand that for an airplane to stay up, it needs to go into the wind both at takeoff and landing, so what, what Ralph was talking about is really,
That's the point.
what directions the wind come from, coming out of the east or northeast, four zero, nine zero.
Hmm.
Comes out of northwest.
Runway four is a four, four degrees, it's a compass.
Yeah, three, three.
Yeah.
So the only, the purpose of this letter is to say, we don't think this is a good idea to increase the load over either Hull, Hail, Cohasset, Quincy. That's the point. And I did not finish, I did not finish out the right-hand wing over here, but you have to understand, that in order for the plane to get where that entry point is, it's gotta go by Cohasset, Cohasset also. So, you know, the point is, no more, you can't decide to move flights off of Milton, or maybe off of Dorchester and just push them over onto the South Shore with the enormous quantity we've got already, that's the basis of this letter. What did I change? The words used in this letter, which unfortunately, all the other people have signed off on, are very dangerous. Um, the original letter had the words equity in it, equity and fairness. There is no defining equity and fairness, as many people will define equity as moving the load, which is over maybe Winthrop or East Boston or Chelsea or Milton, onto communities which have low populations. So equity is often defined as large populations shouldn't get too many flights, because in fact, they're poor and they don't use the, the airplane, the air, the, the airport as much. So the equity na- the equity word is really dangerous in the original document. So I have changed that to talk about, you know, no change runway use, that is, the point of this whole thing is, you've gotta find solutions which in fact, don't move traffic around. That's, that's, well, that's a, just quick summary of what this is all about. There are many really good ideas coming out of MIT, but this is not a good one, so, yeah.
So, the Carnarsie solution, that's just for landings, it's not for takeoffs?
No, it's not for takeoffs, no.
Just landing?
Just, yeah, right. And just, and there are really, this actual route is also used um, for land, landings on three-three, the ones that normally come in over Cohasset. So they come in the Hull gut, they just take a sharper turn and go into three-three. One of the risks of this proposal is that not only will they, um, you know, really, really uh, uh, i- interfere with, with lots of communities by doing this, it has the risk that they'll decide that in fact, well, maybe we don't even wanna land on four, because four is really kinda northeast and, and three-three is kinda northwest, but they're not too far off, so you could land either one at any time. So they could decide, hey, we'll use this route all the time and take them in on three-three, which it'd be worth, worse for us, I mean, it's a real issue here.
So if, if this is, there's four waypoints there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, right.
And the other one has probably two, from what looks like a straight-in approach.
Yeah, yeah, it, it probably has more than that, but yes, it's a straight-in, yes, right, yeah.
Would, you know, would, would, would. Would, look at the, the four waypoints here, and a relatively narrow stretch there.
Yeah.
With crosswinds or weather, I would presume that would be abandoned and would go back to a more straight-in approach, such as s- snow or rain or sleet or anything that would.
You're absolutely right, I'm, you get. That's right. Yeah.
I mean, you'd have to bank the plane, it's, this looks like Hong Kong coming with a high tack, high tack, where you, you take them ready to return.
Yeah, that's right. Basically, not, not by all the apartment buildings, yeah, right, right, yeah.
To miss the apartment buildings, um, I would presume they're gonna have to throttle in here to make a, well, it's almost a hundred degree turn.
That's right. Return, but the last turn is only three miles out.
Right.
So they'd, they'd presume they'd be throttling in, as opposed to a glide approach or the other way around.
That's right. Right. That's exactly right.
So they should run harder.
It's exactly right, yeah, there's noise. The other thing you ought to know about this, this is crazy stuff, is that, in fact, this won't be used, I think it won't be used a lot, and the reason why is, is called sequencing.
Cloud, maybe.
Yeah, well.
When, when planes are arriving on any one of the runways, they have to be kept three miles apart. I assume that when they use this, they'll also be having some straight-ins, now you gotta sequence them then. Even now, we have a, we have a route that actually goes into runway three-three, that looks very much like that, is rarely used, because in fact, what the pilots will tell you is, I can only do that in, in really good visual conditions, as you were saying, exactly, right?
Mm-hmm.
And second is the sequencing is very difficult, so they like to do it only at night when there are lots, lots of space between the planes. So whether they use this or not, is a really interesting question, and the other one is, remember, when this is being used, they're departing on nine. So the question is, you got nines going up, coming right back over, and this thing coming underneath, I mean, this is really, this is a crazy idea.
Right. Right. Right.
But the thing is, you don't want it to happen, this letter says, don't let this happen.
Okay.
So, it seems also there's something of a safety issue in terms of having to take all these angles, just as inherently, you know, extra maneuvering for the planes in a dense area.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Yeah.
That's right. No, they won't, that's, that's right.
Is that pointed out to them or are they?
They, well, they, the, the other thing about Hansman, which is really very good, is that he has excellent relationships with the controllers, with the airlines, with the pilots, with everybody. So generally, none of these will be impossible. But in direct con, cause I talk with a lot of the pilots on this stuff, they don't like to do this kind of thing, because as they say, when you get to that last waypoint, you're looking at a, a slew of lights out there, particularly at night, and you're saying, you know, where, you know, where's the runway? This is a real issue for pilots, they've gotta visually find that airplane.
It's not a question I want my pilot asking.
No.
Right, now, they do a flight management systems, which are extremely precise, not all of them, and so they may follow those waypoints perfectly until you actually take control, when you're actually landing, but nevertheless, this is, this is a very odd thing to have proposed.
Sure, they do, they do.
Anyway, that's all I've got, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect summary, thank you very much.
Okay.
So how does this work governance-wise, it go, this, does Massport take a vote on these kind of policy changes?
Well, it, what happens is, it actually comes to the committee that I, I run called the Engagement Operations Subcommittee, and we make a recommendation to Massport as to accept or reject. That's how it works. We will, we are going to make, we have made a recommendation already, that this is not an acceptable proposal, but it took a lot more clout than a few of us have. We need, we need the selectment of these communities, and we really think this is not acceptable to the communities, we're not.
So this goes to the Massport Board?
This goes to Tom Glenn, who's the, the chairman of, of Massport, yeah.
Okay.
Just another question, I assume of these other communities, like Milton and writing letters saying we support it?
Yeah.
They, they have a well-organized campaign.
Yeah.
Very well.
Okay, so, um, just because Ralph has f- fine-tuned the letter, um, I mean, do, I think it makes sense to, to vote, to adopt this letter and send it out, um, you know, by, from the Board Selectmen, from the Potomac Cohasset, assuming everybody's okay with that.
So, so let me just understand, every, everyone else got a boilerplate letter and they're pretty much just signing it and sending it in, ours will be a little bit different.
Definitely.
Right.
I don't have any, I don't know insights into what they have agreed to, it is.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
It's, it's literally a letter that we got, it was in our packet, I think, last week, and it's, it is not very different.
Interesting, except for.
Yeah.
It, it, as I said, Ralph, it's a word we use.
You took the equity stuff out.
Equity is a big issue, very dangerous word, or the word's fairness and equity, nobody can have a great.
Right.
You're inviting a considerable debate, you know, right?
Yeah, yeah, right, exactly.
Yeah.
Fine, so do we need to vote on this letter?
So, yeah, we do need to vote on the letter, um, so the Ralph's version of the letter.
Will we adopt the revision under the, under the hand of the Board Selectmen?
Okay.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, okay.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you, Ralph.
Hey, Tracy?
Yeah.
Get to be in touch tomorrow and we'll get this sent up, um, and sent over to Joan's office as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Investment update, Treasury Collector. Gotta get me back on track, time-wise, sorry for the wait.
Hey, Paula and I, Treasury Collector, um, I'll start off an apology, I know this is very late, and uh, I have fallen behind, but I will be catching up, June will be much better. But this is to go over, the, the quarter's ending December and March, right, and um, we'll start with December. In December, ev- everything, um, made money, we were, um, however, we did step on behind on some of our benchmarks, and even the longer-term benchmarks was a, was a little bit worrisome. Um, but like I said, we did gain positive for the year, the expendable trusts were up one percent for the quarter, three to five for the year, and four percent for three years. Um, the permanent trusts were up two point one percent for the quarter, nine point six for the year, and six point seven percent for three years. And then the OPEB funds were up approximately three to four percent for the quarter, thirteen to seventeen for the year, and six to eight for three years. So if you look at the other years, they, they still were reasonably healthy, that, um, but there was some concern, because we were falling off of our benchmarks, as you can see from the, the performance, you guys have all this in your packets, right?
Sure, yeah. Yes.
Um, so that was really it on December, just a little bit more in March, if you want me to just move on into that, if you have any questions with December.
Let's go March.
Did we get back on track?
No. Um, March, um, actually all but one of the, the funds lost money, the, the PRET was the only one that, the OPEB, um, was the only one that had positive returns for the quarter. And they all fell off, um, but again, with the, the exception of the PRET, um, the benchmarks, and they, they seem to have fallen off in the longer time periods as well. And I actually added another time period, cause we've held these for more than three years now, all of them, and getting close to, to uh, four and five years. Um, the expendable trusts lost about two and a quarter for the, two and a half percent for the first quarter. Um, one fund did, and another one actually gained a half a percent. Um, they both had gains of two point five percent and three point one for, for three years, and over two point five percent for since two thousand and fourteen, so it's kind of dropped off there. And the permanent trusts, they lost three point nine percent for the quarter, one point one for the year, and five point three for three years. Um, and five point four percent for the, um, since inception. Again, they've fallen off their, their benchmarks. And the OPEB funds, they had kinda mixed, one of the funds, um, was point five percent, um, let's see, for the quarter, but gained eight percent for the year, five percent for three years, and four point six since inception. Um, and the other fe- fund gained one, point five percent for the quarter, twelve point three for the year, seven point five for three years, and seven point four, um, since inception. So you can see there's a little bit, I mean, that, some of that has to do with some of the investment opportunities, the PRET has different opportunities than, um, Bartholomew.
Yeah.
Um, let me just, while I get into some of that, because I talked before with Bartholomew and Rockland Trust over this, because, um, we've fallen off benchmarks and I figure that needs a good explanation.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, a lot of it, to the, for the top three funds, the expendable trust, the two expendable trusts, and the permanent trust, a lot of that has to do with, um, the legal list. We've talked about this before, the legal list is a lot of large companies, more mature companies, the, the dividend-paying companies value, and less of the growth. You don't have the, the co- the banks, the, the Facebook, Amazon, um, Netflix and Google, a lot of those, which, you know, tend to do really, I mean, and well, we, we don't critique in that, we have the, um, like a lot of consumer staples, the General Mills, Pepsi, McDonald's, Coca-Cola, that kinda stuff, that's been around for a long time. And they haven't been doing as well, a lot of the dividend stocks haven't been doing as well. Um, technology, we've talked before, we've done really well when technology has tanked. That's because the only technology stock on the legal list is Hewlett-Packet.
Wow.
So if technology is doing really well, you know, wherever I am, they, Hewlett-Packet to do well, and if they don't, you know, the, so it's, it's a little difficult.
You've missed it out.
Um, and this is a particularly difficult time for the legal, the legal list.
For the investment decisions, maybe.
Um.
That legal list is, is that mandated by state, is that a state regulated?
Yeah, excuse me, yes, it is, and there was actually a bill to, to move that, um, and allow prudent investor. But as I understand, that has recently moved to study, which.
A kiss of dust.
So it's going, yeah.
Much, yeah.
Well, it is an election year, you never know what's gonna happen soon after that.
To the seller.
Well, there is another option, and I think we've talked about this before, and I was kinda hoping that this would, would go through, so we didn't have to. You can use special legislation and get permission to, for Cohasset to move to the prudent investor
Hmm.
for like permanent or expendable trusts, um, not general fund, but some of the other stuff. So, uh, we can talk more about that at another time, but, you know, that's something I'm.
So by definition, then, under prudent investor, your, uh, your manager is taking on a fiduciary role with respect to your objectives, right?
There's more opportunity for them, but they still have an IPS, they still, you know, um.
Right, right, that's, that's your, that's your statement of restrictions and objectives.
Right, so they have to follow that.
Right. Right, but it, they're taking it on as a, as a fiduciary.
Well, I think they have a fiduciary responsibility.
They should, but it, but under pru- prudent investor is the, is the language that matches up with, with that concept. And the reason I'm going there is that it, uh, you, what I'm understanding you to say is it allows them, would allow that manager, whoever it might be, to move away from, it's actually humorous to think about the Massachusetts State Legislature coming up with investment ideas. Um, but move them away from that and go in, go toward a, uh, uh, a proposed recommendation that lines with the objectives under the IPS, right?
Right.
Okay, I think that's worth considering.
Yeah, can, Tracy, can you make a note in the minutes that this, this is, um, the special legislation is something we should talk about when we talk about our budget message?
Hmm.
And just make sure we don't lose sight of it, cause it's worthy of discussing.
The other pieces of, of that, um, like financials with Bank of America and AIG, that's it. Um, so they did really well, but we don't have a whole lot of opportunities to invest in those. Um, utilities, there's only a few, and they did really well, um.
We have General Electric in there? We do, yeah, yes, of course.
And that's, um.
Probably explains something, right?
Industrials, yes, that does explain something, and some of the differences between the different companies that we have.
We all do, right.
One, I think, was a little heavier on the, the GE, um, and.
Do we, do we have tobacco stocks in there?
Yes, we do.
And how's they doing?
Um, there are, yeah, they're fine.
Terrible, they've got a fantastic dividend.
Yeah, right, that's right.
So their, their return was pretty good?
I didn't look at them specifically, I could find out, cause it's, it's just the Altria.
They're mental meds, but generally speaking, um, traditional value companies are well out of favor currently. So Procter and Gamble is as cheap as I've ever seen it, right?
Yes.
But that's an, as an example, now, and it, it, what that means by being cheap is that essentially, the price isn't rising. You see that in the performance, where, whereby the broader index is, is rising, the index clip, but our performance is, is very modest. So, it's, it, it, what Paula is gently laying on the table. So, it's, it, it, what Paula is gently laying on the table as an opportunity, um, would potentially benefit us greatly. I, I am certain that Rockland Trust has better take abilities than they show.
Right, yeah, it seems that, and we'll discuss this later, but that, you know, the world is changing so fast, and these companies are emerging, and these opportunities that, you know, our investment capabilities or the way we're doing it may be a little outvoted, and have us locked into, and not being able to respond to where opportunities are.
Yeah.
Because on the other hand, uh, companies go down pretty quickly too, and I'm expected at least too, so it is, uh, it would be an interesting discussion for us to have, it's not a, it's not a simple thing to be dealing with though.
Right.
Right, there's only twenty two companies on the legal list, and a third of them are the consumer staples, which are the.
No, you're, you're.
Right. And if they're on the legal. Is that all that, is that all that our investors can invest in only that legal list?
Those stocks and, and corporate bonds from those, but.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, those are the, yeah, and that's really seems rather limited.
It is, I mean, interestingly enough, but.
Well, you g- you have the bonds and, and some of the safer things, but as far as on equity standpoint, twenty two.
Right. Yeah, right. Especially in this day and age.
So, imagine when that legal list was formed, Microsoft effectively didn't exist.
Right.
Exactly.
Right, oh, gosh.
Right.
All right, so we're gonna take that up?
Definitely take it up.
So.
When?
When we do our budget message, which we'll, we'll start talking about in August.
Okay. Fine.
Um, let's see, there's one thing else I need to say, yes. Right, well, that, that takes care of the, the legal list, as far as OPEB, um, we had PRET, um, I mean, they got the half a percent for the quarter, um, and they're still twelve percent for the year, and seven percent for three years, so they're, they're, they're doing okay, it's not obviously their best quarter. Um, and Bartholomew, we, we also have OPEB funds, now that, they're, that, that's just the physical size of that, uh, of our investment with them. They can't really get into things like private equity, um, although he did offer one option of a fund, but I haven't really looked into it at that point, so it's not invested in that kind of stuff, hedge funds. Um, and their approach is actually the more conservative, and they tend to go to these bigger value companies, so that's hurt them a little bit in this, in this arena as well. Um, it lost less actually than the expendable trusts that are tied to the legal list, but they still tend to, to try and play a more conservative role, which is a nice contrast to PRET, where it's a little bit more aggressive with the private equity and the hedge fund type, type stuff, so. Um, and that was, that was pretty much all I had on, on that, if you guys have any questions?
Any other questions? No?
No.
Great, thank you, Paula.
You too. We'll have a more comprehensive report for June, um, and.
Thank you.
I don't.
Thank you very much.
Close the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get us some free cash. Um.
It's never free.
It's never free.
Get us some, some free cash. I like that.
Um, so if it's all right with the board, I wanna, um, because I know there's somebody in the audience who's here for an appointment, I'm gonna, if, if it's all right, skip over the vote on special municipal employee status, and we'll discuss that after we do some appointments, does that make sense?
Great.
All right.
Okay, just.
Make a motion over the, uh, uh, agenda, place the, uh, the selectmen's appointment, you know, to, ahead of the board on special municipal employee status.
Just a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we just amended the agenda, so we're gonna take up some of the selectman appointments. Um, so we have, um, at our next meeting, there are a, a number of people who applied for a couple of different committees, um, wanted to get placed on the best possible match, um, so I have put off, um, appointments for those committees that have either competition or, um, people interested in it, uh, so that we can have a more substantive, substantive conversation and invite the people in, um.
We're gonna invite the chairman in too for this case?
Yes, 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 yep, um, but we didn't really have enough, I didn't have enough time to get that organized this, this week, so. Um, I know we have Kristen Roseback, do you wanna come up? Um, so the first committee I'd like to look at is the Cohasset Common Historic District Commission. We have three positions to fill, um, one is a resident of the historic district, and applying for that, um, uh, spot is Gordon Stevenson, who's a reappoint, who would be a reappointment. The historical society representative is applicant is Joy Schiffman, and then we have one alternate position, which Kristen can nicely, um, fall into. Um, so if you don't mind just introducing yourself and, um, just telling us a little bit about your, um, interest in this.
Sure. Um, Kristen Roseback, thirteen North Meaton Street, I'm a resident of Cohasset Common, I'm also a Realtor in town, work for Willie Rivas, right in Village. Um, interested in the position because I have, my dream has come true that I have moved to Cohasset Common, um, and I would love to.
Yeah, we're jealous.
Don't be. Um, I would love to help keep it what I feel is the most beautiful spot in town.
Great, thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay.
No. What are the big issues for the Cohasset Historic, for the Common? Very big juicy issues? Park benches, right?
Parking.
With brass, uh.
Town hall?
Town hall.
And town hall. Who could forget town hall?
It's not only agenda this week, but I did promise.
How could I forget town hall? It's, uh, PTSD, that's my problem.
Even up, yeah. Yeah. No, it's great, and one of the things that I'm hoping that we're gonna do a better job of this year, um, is, is just getting different, the different committees and boards in here once, once in a while, just to kind of let us know what's going on, because, I mean, sometimes we know because we're, you know, we have friends on a committee, or because we happen to hear it on the street, but, um, but as, as a board, it's really great to hear about the work that all of these different committees and boards do. So thank you for stepping up. Um, with that, I would like, uh, to entertain a motion to, um, appoint to three-year terms Gordon Stevenson, Joy Schiffman, and Kristen Roseback.
So move, so move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
All set?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, just as, as a matter of course, um, either Tracy or the clerk will send you out information about, welcome to the committee. Um, there is a state ethics test that you have to take in order to do so, and you'll need to get sworn in, and other than that, um, we're gonna do some training in the fall, just in terms of open meeting law, some of the weird mechanical stuff that you heard earlier in the meeting, but, um, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Um. So just, um, just putting it out there, the Cohasset Cultural Council's also looking for, um, uh, some applications, um, they, we don't have anybody for one position, although when we meet up, when we meet some of these new applicants who, this is a committee.
Could you tell the viewers what the committee does?
So the Cohasset Cultural Council is actually, um, gets guidance from the state Massachusetts Cultural Council, and they basically function as a re-granting organization. So Cohasset gets a formulaic amount of money to redistribute in the community to cultural, um, events and activities, like the Art Center and the Dramatic Club, and, um, there's a lot of other things, uh, I think the rec, um, band concert gets funding as well. So the committee usually sits once or twice a year and reviews grant applications, um, that are, that would be in the fall, and they make recommendations to the board at the Mass Cultural Council, and, um, it's great, it's a, actually a really great committee to be on because they really talk about a lot of the cultural and artistic things that happen in town, and, and, and get to, get to fund some of that in, in schools too, do some of the schools programs. So, and that's where I started, um, so, um, it's all downhill from there. Um, so Cohasset Cultural Council, um, Cohasset Harbor Committee, we're gonna wait on that, um, till next week. Same with Community Preservation Committee, there is one citizen posi- position that's still open. Um, and again, they, they review grant applications on, um, for Community Preservation Act funding. Um, Conservation Commission, we're also waiting till our next meeting, Elder Affairs, um, so we have three people, we have, um, hold on. So, we have applications from, um, Paul Kierce, Diana Carter, and Helen Nothnagle, um, who are currently members, and, um, and also James Carpenter, who are all full members currently of Cohasset Elder Affairs, seeking reappointment, um, for a three-year term.
And what can we, we think of a three-year term?
Hang on one second. Okay, I just wanna, I just wanna make a correction, so, um, the three full members are Paul Kierce, Diana Carter, Helen Nothnagle. The associate members are James Carpenter and Sarah Livermore. So.
I'm covered through, that's right, true.
Yep. So, um, is there a motion for full membership, three years, Paul Kierce, Diana Carter, Helen Nothnagle, associate members James Carpenter and Sarah Livermore?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Sorry, there was two different, two different lists on that. Um, fence viewers, um, we have Annette Sawchuk and Glenn Pratt, both of whom are looking for reappointment for a one-year term. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, Annette Sawchuk, Glenn Pratt. Um, Historical Commission has one open, uh, full member, three-year position that's, uh, available. Um, I'm gonna skip over the next two that are on our list. Um, register voters, Tracy, could you make a note to contact Carol about that? Um. Social Recycling Cooperative, we're also gonna put that off till next week because we have, um, a couple of applications for that, and, um, ZBA, same thing, um, and we're gonna talk about the ZBA in a minute. Um. All right.
Okay.
And I think that's it for the straight-up appointments tonight.
What about, uh, Norfolk County Advisory?
So I wanna get to that with respect to the selectmen. So I'm gonna move on to selectman liaison, and I'm gonna hand this out, and I apologize, but I just did it at work. Um. Are you giving me the bob? So, um, I just wanna go over, um, the, the different roles that the selectmen, um, play serving on other committees. So, um, we extended the master plan committee terms at our last meeting, so Paul and Kevin represent the board of selectmen, um, there are two selectmen positions on that. We extended the term through the end of the master plan, which will be at the end of this calendar year. Um, we discussed at one of our last, uh, probably a month ago, meetings, the long-range planning committee, which has been, um, active in a lot of financial, uh, modeling, um, Steve and Jack served on that, and Jack mentioned that he did not wanna continue with that. Kevin at that meeting said he would be interested in that, and I guess I'm here to ask if Steve wanted to continue, or how we would like to fill out the representation on that committee.
Well, the original, the original plan, and I don't think anything has been proposed to change it, was that you carry it through for two years.
Right.
I have served two years, okay? Um, I will serve another, however, I think it's in the board's best interest to consider, uh, replacing me so that there's a year's continuity, I've already announced that I'm not planning on seeking any reelection. So from the board perspective, I think you need, I think it's useful to have a level of continuity that would serve as part of this transition this year. Said, said bluntly, yeah, I'll continue if you need me to and no one else is willing to do it. However, I think it's in the, in, uh, it's in our best interest to stay with our, our, within our stated, uh, plans, which is a two-year term.
On your own.
I've completed the two-year term.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, and hand it off.
Okay.
I seem to remember there's a tremendous amount of competition for this seat.
Yeah.
If they, uh, I thought.
There was, I guess I really wanted to do it, um.
Of course. So. Well, good news.
But, yeah.
Oh, you get a vacation.
Yeah, I, I, you know, my only, my only hesitation is there are two, a- and I, I guess maybe, I don't, I don't know exactly what the long-range planning committee has done for the last couple of years, so, i- you know, what is sort of the charge for it going forward? And how does that mesh with, so if Paul and Kevin were both, for example, on master plan and long-range plan, does that?
They're gonna, they're out, they're out creating Frankenstein, I would be very cautious about that.
That's, that's my point. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
But I, but is there, you know, what is sort of the long-range planning committee working on?
Um.
Or do we not know?
Up to this, uh, well, and for this year, I don't think the, the, um, uh, the agenda's been set. What we have addressed, what the committee has addressed up to this point, has been, um, the fundamental question that would affect the town over a period of twenty to five years, so for instance.
Population.
What was, what, what was our population growth, because that would have an impact on everything from schools to public safety, right? Um, what is the likelihood of the continuation of that population growth by way of the, the potential housing units, uh, that could be available? Uh, those were, that was a study that, uh, two members of the committee took on and produced a fairly robust report on, which was presented here. Um, those are.
Kenny and Tanya, yeah.
Yeah, those, those are, those are two specific items. Um, there also then surfaced another piece of information which was critical to us, we have no accurate understanding of our own population. Um, and that's mostly because the census doesn't, is the, 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 the decade, uh, once a decade census really doesn't take a very, uh, very much of an in-depth look at it, and what we record, or have recorded for data through voting rolls and household information and so on, has never been kept. Because it wasn't, it wasn't produced for the purpose of analysis at the local level, it was simply produced for state uses.
Yeah. So, could I, could I maybe suggest holding off on this? And, and I think maybe the next question is, because it is a selectman committee, is to just, I think it is.
Yes, it is. Yes, it's created by us.
Um. To, to review the charge, s- kinda take the temperature of what, what might be in its future, see how that might actually, you know, maybe it's redundant to even convene this while the master plan's wrapping up, and maybe it'll start in the fall, in the winter, and maybe there'll be a whole different approach to the conversation.
I think there's, I, I think there's two different elements there, uh, uh, much of what the long-range planning committee focuses on would inform, uh, the master plan committee, just the same way as, as it would inform any other element of, uh, of town function, so.
Yes, but.
But the primary function of that committee is to help negotiate out the budget, the, the appropriate budget and the split between the town and the schools.
Right. Right.
That's really why it's created in the first place.
Right. Right.
So, I, you know, when I'm, I think we're kind of losing that, I, I, I do think you need to review the charge on that committee.
Yep, let's do that, okay.
Because I do think it's losing a little bit of focus.
Yep, and I think the long-range plan is like at the eighty percent mark, right?
Yeah.
In terms of the information gathering and studies and, and that kind of thing, so let's.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I disagree with, if you're talking about the financial forecasting, the model is still, um, yet to be debuted.
Yeah, that's, that's not landed in the ma- master plan yet.
No, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought you.
I mean, that's, that's a different place, not the long-range plan.
I thought you were talking about the financial model.
Yep. Um, okay, um, I was appointed last year for two, for a three-year term, which expires next year on community preservation. Um, Norfolk County Advisory Board, we did have a community member apply for that position, I spoke with him, he, um, uh, withdrew his application for that, but doesn't wanna be considered, um, when we meet on July tenth for other committees. Um, basically explaining that historically, and I think on the c- on the advisory board currently, it's pretty much all selectmen.
It is all selectmen.
So, um, so, Jack, if you're willing to continue with it?
Sure.
Anybody else wanna drive to the Aggie, uh, once a month?
You know.
Yeah.
I'm happy to serve.
Right, and, and, um, I know the PEB committee will be inviting you at some point to give us an update on that.
Give us the lowdown.
Give us the lowdown.
I'll have to do some research.
Um. Okay, is there a motion to appoint Jack Nyley to the Norfolk County Advisory Board?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Um.
I'm honored.
So, I.
Get your crown.
So I just wanted, there's a couple other things, um, so the P- the Post Employment Benefits Committee, um, I am the selectman liaison to that, I'm not on the committee, I'm just a liaison to it, it has a couple of liaison committees. Um, and then there are two kind of big conversations that have been taking place in town, um, and I think that, given the level of engagement that we need to play in these conversations, that it would really be good to have a selectman, a liaison. So I am suggesting that we have a Harvard Development Liaison and a, uh, legislative liaison regarding town funding, very specifically because two members of the board have, um, been actively involved in those, so Paul has been, um, So Paul has been, um, I, I think they're still answering your phone calls at the legislative level.
They're still are, yeah. Just be idle, I'm gonna keep answering.
But, um, but I would, I would, this is me, I would like to suggest we consider-
It is a question here, you know.
So, I know he's had many conversations and has been a tireless advocate for some capital funding.
I nominate Paul for the legislative liaison.
Regarding, specifically regarding town funding, cause I don't wanna, yeah. Thank you. All those in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Done. And then, um, Jack has been, um, effectively liaison with, uh, the Harvard Committee and also some of the development conversations.
Glad to serve.
And.
He wrote the, uh, proposal to get all the funding.
If you get all the funding.
I think that's somewhat qualifies him.
It hit more than qualifies him. Yeah, he can't, he's, he's got flo- we're getting on floaties.
Can you swim?
Yeah. I, I have, I have a wetsuit.
Can you go to sea wall?
Move, move, move away from point. That's a big, that's a big lift.
Oh. Thank you.
As the, uh, uh, selectman liaison to the harbor development.
Harbor Development Liaison. Um, harbor development in general, yeah. There's a second, all those in favor? Right, okay.
Harbor Development.
Aye.
And, and now, now I'm gonna give you the, the, the secret sauce to all of this, is that I, I really wanna make sure that the board stays updated and actively, um, engaged in what's going on. So, go forth and get us some information. Um, hey, next.
How deep do you wanna go?
Well, not that deep. Um, really quickly, um, I was asked by, um, the chair of the ZBA whether, um, we would consider, um, designating members of the ZBA, um, when you designate a committee, um, hold on, I skipped over something, but I'll, I'll go back to it. Um, you designate a committee to have special municipal employee status. Um, the reason for this is there are people that are interested in serving, um, on the ZBA who could potentially have business, um, before the town. So there is a state provision to create, um, a special municipal employee, um, status for members of whatever committee you deem is a special municipal employee.
That's where we are.
Uh, we are by law. And then we have Cohasset, the selectmen have voted, the Board of Assessors, the Advisory Committee, thirteen volunteers, community Cohasset Emergency Management Director, Cohasset Housing Partnership Governance Committee, some of these are, um, not totally operational. Some individuals and the Water Commissioners as, um, having special municipal employees' status. Um, um, you know, Jim's, I talked to Jim before the meeting, he had an obligation, so he couldn't stay. But basically, um, you can have business before the town, but not before the board that you sit on. So, for example, if you're a lawyer and you represent people before the Conservation Commission, but you're on the ZBA or the Planning Board, um, without the special municipal employee status, you would not be able to, to perform that representation in front of any town boards. As a special municipal employee, and again, it, 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 it ends up being given to each member of whatever committee is designated. Um, that person could appear before another committee. Um, so.
The ZBA's kind of, you know, it's, it, it's, it's a, it can be a controversial.
Yep.
Committee.
Yep.
That hears a lot of different issues.
Right, right. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's definitely a discussion worth having, and we can have it with Chris here, if you guys would be more comfortable, um.
I think we need to explore it more, just to understand the pros and cons.
Yeah, I think we also have Lampy, an attorney here to, to, with the ramifications of this.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Yep.
And, and if we were to have that discussion, then the attorney should give us some preparatory material, because, um, I think Jack brings up a good point.
Yep. Yep.
Very substantive stuff go before that board, um.
Right, if they're also doing something over a committee.
I wanna understand what we're doing, yeah. I'd like to know how the communities are doing, and there's a lot of, that look, uh.
Yeah. Yep, yep, I totally agree.
Um, forgive me, do you have the membership call for ZGA again? Do you have it currently, like in front of you?
Mm, yes.
Could, who's on it?
Woody's the only one I know.
Yeah, Woody, and, um.
So I know, I, I know the, what precipitated this was somebody wanted to, um, wanted to apply for a position on ZBA, and they are an attorney who works for a firm who occasionally has business before the planning board, or, or one of the boards, one of the regulatory boards.
Well, if it's a planning board, the planning board's material goes straight to the ZBA, I mean, that's, that's, I don't know if they wanna be going down that route.
That's right, yep, yeah, right, yeah. So this- Yeah, I think we get, yep, I think it's, uh, absolutely, the conversation has.
Good. Well, I'm just not sure if we wanna be monitoring it either, you know, that's why you have these rules, something like.
Right.
I'm not too hot on this topic.
No, I think you gotta be.
Yeah. So.
We have enough issues.
We do.
You know, I, you know, board here.
So ZBA, um, there are three permanent members, uh, Peter Gertica, uh, Charlie Higginson, and Woody Chidick, and there's three associate members.
I thought, I thought Peter moved out of town. I thought Peter moved to, uh, California.
Gertic?
Yeah.
Wait.
He sold his house.
Yeah, he just reapplying for a position there. Um, and then associate members are Ben Lacy, who is leaving the ZBA.
Oh, okay, alright.
So that position, associate, uh, there is an associate position available, David McMorris and, um, Matt Watkins. So, alright, so we can, um, you know, I'll ask Jim to maybe to, or Chris to get counsel to write up a little summary of what, what it really means, um, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Um, and then I skipped over accidentally, I'm sorry, appointments to the Cable Advisory Committee. Um, so they have seven positions available, and I don't know why, but they're one-year appointments. Um, we have applications from, um, Nicole Gravener and Claudia Russell. So, um, Claudia would be new to the committee, I know her through Rotary, and, uh, Nicole Gravener's been before us, um, and was appointed about a year ago. She's doing gang bester work, so, um, is there a motion to appoint Claudia Russell and Nicole Gravener to a one-year term on the Cable Advisory Committee?
So move, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There's still five other positions. I know some of them are filled and they haven't, um, signed up for reappointment, so you gotta, um, I'll go after them. And then there are positions available on that committee too, when we discuss where to put some of other, um, some of the other people interested in, in serving the town. Next up, Town Manager Update, and we have our acting town manager here. And we received a, um, email from Chris, um, with information that, uh, Jen Orm had researched regarding transient vendor license. Uh, per Steve's question at our last meeting about there being only three transient vendor licenses for, um, sales at Sandy Beach.
So presently, presently, there's only three licenses available. Um, there also is a bylaw, is it a bylaw that was it put into OPEC? A ZBA decision that only two of the three vendors can be at, at Sandy Beach at any one time.
Yeah.
So there's a rotational type of situation that if, you know, there's already two there, then one has to exit before the other one can come in. So they have, I guess somehow between the three, the three of them come up with some sort of a rotation that makes this thing work. Two of them happen to be ice cream trucks, and I think the third one is Dell's Lemonade. So, the question, the question that's being asked is what they do in other communities. They have multiple vendor licenses, and then they build a schedule in. So the question just becomes, how do we go about that if that's something that the board wants to do? To open it up to other vendors. There are vendors in town that have some interest in, in getting onto this list. And how do we then make a schedule that meets everybody's needs?
So we literally take the calendar and do blocks at a time and assign it to each of the people who have a license?
One of the, one of the vendors that's interested has also had, um, some dealings in the city of Austin in regards to vendor licenses. And that's exactly what he said they do. They have these areas that are probably the prime spots, and they say, you're only allowed there from X to Y.
Yep.
And then it's time to go. So they create that schedule.
Where's, where's? Food, the food trucks have, they have specific areas, um, and they rotate.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
You know, so when I walk outside my building on a Monday, the group that's there is completely different than on a Tuesday.
Right.
Um, this arose as, uh, as Chief Sylvia's pointing out, from a, uh, a local merchant who would like to add Sandy Beach on, on his list, uh, maybe essentially expand his storefront by going, uh, going mobile. And was told from Town Hall that there's only three licenses. And as I read through that, that's actually not the case. It was a policy adopted some time ago by the board of selectmen, that three licenses, that three would be the number, and the number shall be three.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, exactly. See, someone got it, I knew so. Um, but it, it's really the ZBA item.
Right.
That has been more restrictive. Now, there's, some of the options include going back to appeal the ZBA ruling, which I think is probably a longer-term. Well, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it quits. I think it, it's worth going back to ask it, because again, I don't know the history of the ZBA ruling, but let's assume that it was ten years ago, and the concept of, uh, mobile, uh, food was, was not looked at in the same way that it is today.
Good point, yep.
Having said that, that's still a longer process. And the question that I would have, that I asked the board from this is, do you see the relevance of the policy to limit licenses at three? And if you, you know, i- i- because under the current circumstances, we, we exclude anybody at the local level, uh, if they aren't among those three.
So, a cou- a couple thoughts I have. I, I don't know what the right limit is, whether it's three or four hundred and three, which it isn't. So I definitely think that's wo- a worthy conversation, you know, what's the right number. Um, we're still limited with the two at a time, um.
Currently, yes.
Currently, because that, that is a longer term, I mean, we, if we, if we upped it to, if we upped it to four or five,
It's out of our hands.
and we could probably manage with a no more than two at a time rotational schedule, but that's a discussion to, for us to have. My, the only thing, uh, one of the things noted in, in the memo we got was, um, just sort of the procedure, like whether we would have to have a hearing, to what extent would we involve the Sandy Beach Association in the conversation, um, you know, what really is the right number? If it's two or to limit. And then, and then the more, the trickiest piece of this is, who keeps that schedule? How does that rotational schedule get put together and then monitored?
Very powerful position, by the way.
It, it, no, it absolutely is.
I know it.
So.
I wanna have that, I wanna have that authority.
That, it, right.
I'll volunteer for it.
Who's that guy in New York? Moses, Moses?
Oh, Paul Steed. So, you know.
You know what I'm thinking of?
Yeah. You see the trucks pull up to Paul's yard, yeah?
I think. And he gives them the blessing.
Every hour, you know?
There's like something exchanged, we're not sure what it is.
Little Bell's Lemonade.
Yeah, I could use that now. So, so I definitely, you know, I'm more than happy to have this conversation, because especially when you're talking about, you know, iced coffee, I'm all in.
And I'd love to hear from the applicant, you know, I'd like to hear from the existing licensees and people that potentially could do it.
Yeah. Yep.
Why don't we start off with a discussion, maybe invite some Sandy Beach people to come and, cause they know the whole area then, say, well, what do you think? What's the, what's the most ideal thing on that property? Would, would you like to see three or less?
Do you suggest Sandy Beach we're talking about, basically?
We could just start with them, though, I mean, that's a, that's a group.
Again, keep, keep, keep in mind that, that no matter what, only two vendors, no- nothing that we do is going to change the ZBA restriction of two vendors at a time in the Sandy Beach parking lot.
Correct, without an appeal or rate or, or, yeah.
Okay. And, and that's in the code, that's in our bylaw.
Well, it's a, it's a ZBA finding in nineteen, from nineteen ninety-one.
That's a long time ago.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It's just a finding, though, it's not anything in the code, right?
How, what is, the, what is the finding generally? You mean, the finding is that the ZBA has authority on how many?
But it becomes law.
Yeah, seems odd to me.
This doesn't seem, um.
Also included is the nineteen ninety-one zoning board decision that impacts the rules and regulations of vendors at Sandy Beach and Governor Island.
We have the decision.
They, they declared themselves, though, as being the government.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure that's.
Well, I, I, it's.
I, I.
You know, what we could do is, is not to belabor the legal thing, but I mean, when we had this discussion, have Lampy look into seeing what our legal status is, who, who makes this decision, what are the parameters, and he can take a look at ninety-one, he'll, he'll know instantly what, what's appropriate.
Look, the, the, the question I have for the board is not a, not a matter of, um, debate or vote at the moment, but do, do, do we collectively see the, uh, the logic of encouraging, uh, by, by way of the n- the number of permits,
Having concessions.
Yeah.
encouraging local businesses to, to be free to be able to participate?
Yeah, yeah, I think we should have this discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and the world's changed too, the trucks are much different than they used to be, and.
The, the, don't be doing it. Yeah.
Right, and, and, and one other thing that I, I, so I'll, I'll schedule a conversation about this soon. I do wanna hear from Sandy Beach, cause one of the interesting pieces of this is when, when the Sandy Beach Association came before CPC and the Board of Selectmen, before special town meeting, I think that's when we approved funding for the new beach house. They were planning on having concessions in there. And as a, as a way of employing more kids and generating a little bit of revenue and all that. And, and they stopped that because of some concern, um, with, with neighbors, um, and some of the mechanics. But I never really heard fully exactly what prevented them from going down that road, and I think that would be somewhat interesting to this conversation.
Yeah, I think it's also, it's worthy of us to consider, cause it's good, it may be good for the public to have another choice. I'm all, you know, they're a big constituent, you know, and a lot of our citizens are the ones that use that beach, and they may wanna have a third truck in there, or whatever, whatever.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I think it's a good discussion there.
There's, there's a lot of questions, and I think some of them Kevin just brought up about, uh, having an evaluation of that ZBA finding, are they actually the proper authority, et cetera.
Yeah, we should find out who, who's supposed to be making the decision.
Well, they. No, no, I, I believe that's correct, because if you read the decision, it talks about how, uh, Sandy Beach is in an RC residential district. So they asked, somebody applied for a special permit to allow this exception, so that they could have food vendors or transient, um, food vendors in the lot, and they, they set the conditions, which they're more than, that's, that's their job.
I see. Okay.
So I, you know, whether this is morphed and whether there's other ways of managing it, we'll, we'll figure that out, but.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's a, it's a.
Let's just see, so they can, they can change their decision by saying, they, three or four.
Absolutely, and, and it's a park.
We can just file an appeal, that's, yeah, they're an appeals board, yeah. So.
Yep. Yep.
Or they can just issue another decision, just say, we've entered five vendors and rotate accordingly, three and five.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, it, it's worth.
But you do need to coordinate, I, I think you guys are right about coordinating with Sandy Beach, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's also worth just g- getting back into that, that review too, because it does, the summary does point out that this covers both Sandy Beach and Governor Island.
Governor Island.
So the question of two then arises, well, is it two at each time, you know, can you, you're.
Right, or two, where?
And somebody parked up at Governor's Island, and does that count?
So, so definitely the fir- next step is for us to have a conversation with, um, Sandy Beach and discuss amongst ourselves, you know,
Yeah.
Yeah.
what we think is the right spot, and then, and then we can decide if we wanna do something with the best.
Well, we need to have, I think we still think we need to have Lampy or our attorney.
Oh, yeah, 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 of course.
Look at this and let us know what we can, what are the realm of possibilities here.
Yep. Yep. Yep.
I mean, someone like our attorney knows that stuff back and forth.
Absolutely, yep. And, and that's, that is the most important piece of this, is the process, like do we have to have a public hearing, or is it just a matter of a vote?
Yeah. What's our process, right?
We don't know any of that yet, so, alright.
Excuse me, but just so I have a sen- so right now, per these, whoever's making the laws or whatever it is, th- three vendors is, is all that's allowed, and only two at a time. And they set the schedule themselves. Have I got that faxed right anyways?
Yeah, basically, we issue, we issue three transient vendor licenses.
Seems to be.
At the present time, we've only reissued three.
Three.
Right. And by, through zoning, there's only two allowed to be.
Two at a time.
Yeah.
So the question for the board, the question for the board was, did the board want to entertain more licenses?
Correct.
And then if they do, how do we make sure that there are only two at Sandy Beach at any one time?
Correct.
Or do we wanna?
Or do we change Sandy Beach? Or be in other places or out top, I mean, whatever.
Yeah.
Or we wanna consider making it three. Is, is three too many at one time then?
No, I mean, let's find out.
We don't know.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
I'd like to see what Sandy Beach thinks of that.
Yep.
As I remember the, back quite a while ago, it was, the fear was it was going to be inundated with ice cream trucks. And that was part of the issue. So, I mean, up until Dell's Lemonade, what was it? It was two ice cream trucks, always.
So it's possible within our purview here, if we wanted to, to say we will license one ice cream truck, one, um, drink, uh, lemonade truck, and one taco truck.
Oh.
Yeah.
I bet a taco, you know, something like that. You go ahead, you choose the ice cream truck.
Yeah, right.
I'm not getting into that.
One of the, one of the, the, the zoning thing, the zoning appeal was actually from a clothing, um, vendor who was setting up shop to sell clothing.
Really?
Yep. Anyway, okay, alright, we will, um, take this up at, um.
You know, if they're selling probably with, uh, bathing suits and, and sunglasses and hats and stuff, I'll bet. I don't know if they're selling suits in Vince's Beach, man.
Okay, selectman update. Steve, wanna start us off?
You're gonna be the commissioner, I see.
Uh, uh, only, uh, thing that I have to say is congratulations to the boys lacrosse team, uh, state title winners for Division Three. Uh, uh, only, uh, thing that I have to say is congratulations to the boys lacrosse team, uh, state title winners for Division Three, beating Dover Sherwood.
Dover Sherwood, correct.
Good work, congratulations, and the girls made it very far in the tournament as well.
Yeah. That's great.
That's it.
Punching above our weight class, always. Um, so a citizen, uh, contacted Diane or myself and asked if we would consider clearing off a public pathway on Nichols Road that takes you down to the beach. I don't know how to deal with the request, but I thought I'd just put it out there for everybody, and maybe when Chris gets back, we can talk about it.
Yeah.
But there actually is a road that goes on the other side of Nichols and drops right down to, um, the condos, uh, Ca- what's called Carousel.
Caravel.
Caravel, and, uh, it's, it's always been there, it just needs to be.
Yeah, the public way that snakes.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the citizen said, you know, that road's so busy right now, that it was, would've been nice to just clean that area out and, uh, allow citizens to walk down the pathway.
Now, that's on the right hand side.
Yeah, if you're heading towards the beach, it's on the right hand side, it goes out behind.
Beach.
I walked that a couple times, walked into the low tide and walked across the flats.
Right.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So, I did bring this up with Chris, and, um, but, and he was gonna, you know, take it under advisement, and we talked to DPW about what actually would be, what would be entailed.
Because it's an adverse possession, unless someone knows it disappears.
But my understanding is it's public way. Right, so.
So, let's clear it out and take some pictures of everyone walking on it.
Yeah, it is, it is picked in some places.
Well, that's right.
Yeah.
We do need to make sure there's been adverse possession.
Yeah.
That could easily be happening right there.
It's a really valuable piece of land, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent. Now, Paul, anything for public?
Uh, the only, uh, attorney set up a, a meeting with Joe Moschino, Senator O'Connor, in early July for discussion about the capital, um, budget bond, uh, capital bond that came through the uh, committees and is now on the governor's desk for money for Town Hall, and there's a three million dollar allotment for Town Hall. So, we're gonna try to see what the next step is, how do we, uh, lobby for it? So, I'll be setting up with the Town Hall Committee, and the two of them, and Chris Senior and our finance, to see what, uh, here we can go.
Great.
Keep us posted, legislative liaison regarding the Town Hall, given by the bond.
Trying, as liaison, I'll try to liaise a little more. Um, I think that's, and then the, uh, Arts Festival is fantastic, so, had a great time at Arts Festival.
Always a good time. Kevin?
I'm all set.
Okay, I'm all set too, yeah.
And then Chairman, just real quick, and I forgot to mention it during my little press there, uh, the triathlon went off, we didn't, uh, we didn't have any issues per se. We transported one soul, and it wasn't even a competitor, so, uh, somebody that had a medical emergency while they were there.
I have to smile.
Um, eight hundred and, you can all smile, eight hundred and sixty-four people went into the water, eight hundred and sixty-eight came up. So, um, we're getting ready to build a wall at Sandy Beach, I think they're sneaking in, so, um, that, that.
Wow.
We will not detain any of them.
Rosie Ruiz.
Well, we think we came down to the, the legitimate cause of it was very simply is they had three individuals that were competing like Team Hoyt, that they were already down at the water's edge. So, they didn't come through the turnstile at the top end, and that's where we figured it out. If it was the other way around, I'd still be at Sandy Beach trying to find those four people, so I'm, I'm not upset about that. We will, we will be having a, uh, an after action meeting.
I was just gonna ask.
Uh, and as soon as we do that, then we'll be back to you guys with, you know, what the good, the bad, and the ugly, if there's anything that we think that needs to be, uh, said. What we would ask is that if anybody contacts you with issues, um, this was a one-off event because of the bridge, and, you know, the way we had to do things differently.
I was kidding. Okay.
Um, I haven't heard a lot of people, um, that have had issues, so if we pulled this off, then collectively between, uh, the event organizers, the police, everybody else, um, we did okay, so.
Good work.
And is, is the children's marathon this weekend?
Um, which.
The children's try, try, in a couple weeks, it's a lot.
Right, and I thought it was, yeah, I think it's a couple weeks, it's in July, in July.
So, one, one last question, cause I, I don't wanna belabor it, but, uh, do you have, based upon your full-time position, any update on the bridge?
Um, other than a conversation I had down there that, you know, obviously we're ahead of the original schedule, so where do we stand right now? The deck, the deck has been put down, uh, the aprons are in the process of being worked on, I was down there this afternoon, just taking a look. So, all of that happened, uh, they, they, they're hoping to be considerably ahead of schedule, so, we're looking, you know, we're looking at September at this point, at some point, if, as long as everything continues to go along.
Good.
Their concern is that once they start to put up the railings, that obviously these things have to be crafted, so how long does that take? And they may, they may end up having to do it in pieces, it may not just be a.
But the traffic will start before.
No.
No, can't do it?
No, and we've asked that, I wanted to put public safety across it, and in essence, it's a work zone, and it creates way too much of an issue from a safety standpoint to have all sorts of people there at the same time, so.
Well, yeah, and just to reiterate what Chris said, I think Chris said it last week, there's, there are people that can walk across that bridge, and it is, it is, it is a very dangerous
The stir. It's TFO.
Yep.
Work zone, nobody should be near there.
Uh, and the last thing that I was gonna mention is the yacht club cuts their ribbon on Friday, uh, they will be having their event there, and Shaw's cuts the ribbon also on Friday of the new store.
Yeah.
So, the renovated store, so those, both of those things will happen Friday, and I guess I get to go and represent, uh, the town at those events.
The selectmen were invited for the Shaw's, so if any of these, that's gonna be.
I went to Shaw's today, they moved all the stuff around, I was lost for a while.
I know, I, me too, it'll probably happen to me on Sunday, but it looks great.
Yeah.
Um, okay, um, approval for the minutes of June twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, is there a motion?
Okay, so.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I have no topics, not reasonably anticipated, and I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So.
You got it.
Second.[1795.81]